Ready.
Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at SEC, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, please call the roll.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Jaskiewicz.
Here.
Mr. Kaplan.
Here.
Mr. Reddy.
Present.
Ms. Snyder.
Here.
Mr. Willam.
Here.
Chairman Irakane.
Present.
We also have our board engineer, Mr. Holloway, and our board attorney, Mr. King.
Present.
Slowed off with the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance is the law of the United States of America to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point in this evening's meeting, is there any member of public has had visits be brought to this board that is not on this evening's agenda? I see none. We have correspondence from May Delos Santos withdrawing her application. Do we need a resolution on it?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll draft a resolution.
Okay, should we have somebody make a motion?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so you'll do that. Resolutions, who can vote?
Mr. Chairman, we do have another resolution. It's Sri Participating Developers LLC. It's the Topgolf application.
Yes, okay. Let's go first with application 2145. Berkowitz, Jaskiewicz, Kaplan, Reddy, Snyder. All right, who wants to move?
Move.
Second, Jaskiewicz.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yeah.
Reddy.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Willam.
Yes.
Application 2020. What have we done? Who wants to move that one?
Jaskiewicz.
Snyder.
Thank you. Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Willam.
Yes.
Irakane.
Yes. And then 2255, that's withdrawn?
It's approval to withdraw. That was the same as last one.
Yeah.
That was withdrawn.
Yeah.
Motion to move that resolution?
Second, Snyder.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Willam.
Yes.
Irakane.
Yes. Application 2250, Sri Participating Developers. That's the Topgolf application. Is there a motion to that? Move.
Second.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Willam.
Yes.
Irakane.
Yes. Okay, resolutions are done. Correspondence is done. First application is application 2248. Peter.
Solencius.
Oh, I love that name.
It's a hard one to pronounce.
Did anybody see the name of the superintendent of schools who resigned?
Yeah.
His name is, I think they have 97 letters in his first name.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Did you raise your right hand? You swear a firm testimony about before the board's due to help you got?
Yes.
And for the record, you're Peter Solencius?
Yes.
And you're the owner of the subject property? You're the owner of the subject property?
Yes.
Okay, you're sworn.
You guys can sit down. Use the microphones when you testify. And you are seeking, you want to legalize a 124 square foot shed. Existing yards and courts, side yard, 2.7 allowed, six, and proposed 2.7.
Greg Troutman representing Peter Solencius.
Okay.
So, Mr. Solencius, has this shed, the shed's been there for over 30 years, I'd say. Is that right?
There's been a shed on the property for that long.
Right.
This shed's been there for about over 10 years.
And the shed has been there, there's no garage on the property, no detached garage, correct?
No.
And there's no garage attached to the house, correct?
No.
And you use the shed to store what?
Yarny goods. My son has equipment in there.
Your son?
He has cerebral palsy, yes.
And you use it for wheelchair items and things like that?
Different things, yeah.
And if were to move the shed from there, it would, your yard is rather small, correct?
Yes.
And this is a location that suits the yard and the house, keeping with the neighborhood, is that right?
Absolutely.
And the neighbors, there was, years ago, there was a problem with one of the neighbors. That neighbor was a renter next door, correct?
He was, he was the owner's boyfriend.
And that, they have since moved, correct?
They've been long gone, yes.
And the person who's there now has indicated that she has no problem whatsoever with that shed being there, correct?
That's correct.
And nobody else has indicated any problem with the shed, correct?
No.
And we've provided notice as required for this shed. So we're just asking that the shed, that there's always been a shed on this property, that we be allowed to maintain the shed. It's in good condition. There's no garage that would enable him to, otherwise he'd have outdoor, right, and stored outside under a tarp or something like that.
My house is 800 square feet.
It's around a new shed. It looks nice. There's always been a shed on the property. And the son being disabled, he uses it for wheelchair and things like that.
Where was the prior shed on this property?
Right, same exact spot.
So why are you here?
Yeah, why are you here? If the shed's been there for 21 years, you didn't expand it, you did nothing to it, it's in good shape. Why are you here?
Seriously?
Why are you here?
When there was a problem with the neighbor before, the neighbor was making constant complaints, and I think that property received notices of violations. And at the same time, they looked and they said, well, this shed is too close to the line.
It started with this tree. That's where it started.
So what?
Their tree that was on that property was damaging my cars. I parked there on my driveway. The tree was dying. I asked them to cut the tree down.
So?
These people were just idiots, my neighbors.
As a consequence of?
Right.
Neighbor disputes, violations were issued to the house next door, and then he received this violation. So in order to clean up the encroachment on the setback, that's why we're here to correct what had always been there, but we had to do this.
Why did those neighbors move out?
They moved out about a year and a half ago, wasn't it?
About a year ago, yeah.
Okay. Well, you're in R4 zone, which is a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. As best as I can tell, you exceed 6,000 square feet, so.
On your lot size.
What's that?
On the lot size.
Yeah. On the lot size. So, you know, there is a little negative there, but I, you know, I just want to bring that out. But on the other hand, as long as your next door neighbor doesn't, whoever there now is not complaining about it, or not?
You can't even see the shed.
In fact, there's.
It's the height of his fence department, the shed.
And a lady contacted me who lives in that house now. I forget her name, but she contacted me when we sent that notice out, thinking I was suing her.
Oh, jeez.
And I explained to her what this was about, and she said, absolutely not. She said, oh, that's the man with the son who's disabled. I said, yes. She explained how nice everybody was, and she had no problem whatsoever, and that was that conversation.
Any other questions by the board?
Nope.
Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on the testimony given this evening? Hear none and see none. You don't want to add anything else?
No, no, thanks.
Are any members of, any people, members in the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application? I hear none and see none. What's the comment, guys? It's the minimus. The minimus, right?
Yep, the minimus.
Okay, somebody frame a resolution?
Sure. Application 22:48, Peter Solencius, 50, Aldine Road, Block 340, Lot 8, Zone Off 4. Recommend granting a C variance to legalize the shed, contrary to Section 430-10C.
Second, Willam. Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Willam.
Yes.
Irakane.
Yes. Results of variance is granted. We'll memorialize this in two weeks?
Yeah.
And then you'll be.
Thank you. Thank you.
Take care now.
Good luck.
Application 2222, Sandeep Meta, 7 Eric Away, C variance to legalize the paper patio and others.
Sir, could you raise your right hand? You swear a firm testimony about before the board's due to help you got?
Yes.
And for the record, you're Sandeep Meta?
Yes.
You're the owner of the subject property?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. You have a seat. Please speak.
Well, it's going to take me quite a while to go through all these variances. Fences and walls, fence height, nine feet, six feet is allowed. Accessory side yard gravel, one feet, six feet is allowed. Accessory rear yard patio, zero feet, 10 feet is allowed. Plan and design standards, 34 feet, 24 is allowed. Plan and design standards, driveway setback, nine feet allowed is five feet. Impervious coverage, 77.07 allowed is 40 percent. So tell me, Mr. Meta, which one of these things are you going to remove?
So I'm removing the gravel on the side, in the front and the back, about 1269 square feet. So that brings down the impervious coverage to 11.5. And to mitigate the 11.5, we are putting in a drywall. As per the engineering? As per the engineering recommendations. I worked with Justin and Brandon, and then.
So you want to be in compliance with the engineering?
Yeah, absolutely.
You agree?
Yes, absolutely.
I'm sorry, I was reading this latest memo we got from Mr. Lizza. Can you repeat what you're going to, you're going to mitigate this, and what are you going to remove?
I'm going to remove the gravel on the left side, the right side.
Okay, and how many square feet is that?
1269.
Okay.
1,269. We are going to remove the gravel.
Okay.
That brings down the impervious to 11.5.
Right.
For the 11.5, you are going to put in a drywall, as per recommendations from?
Okay.
The engineering office.
Do we know what percentage that comes up being?
So I think after, after I remove it, it goes down to 55 or 58 percent coverage.
These houses were built in the entire building envelope. There was, there was no, there was no room for additions on this, on these properties.
How long, what all this coverage did you put in recently? Or has it been there for a while?
So the, the pathway has always been there.
The which?
There's a pathway on the right side of the house, in the left side of the house, which was always there before I bought it.
See that?
I put in, you know, stones on the side, where I have like, you know, shrubs and trees, just to make it more beautiful, but.
With the gravel?
Gravel.
That is the water.
But that comes into impervious, so I'm going to remove that.
And then in the back, where your patio and that goes right to the property line?
Yeah, backyard.
Three feet, yeah, on the side, inside, yes.
No, but not in the back.
In the back, it's right, on the property line, it looks like, according to the plan.
On the right hand side?
Yes, yes, on the backside, yes.
That's been there forever?
No, that extension we did, because there was a, there was a pit there, like, you know, a huge pit where water used to fill up, and we have dogs. So we covered it up and, you know, put a patio. But I believe that is again, impervious.
Impervious.
So for that, we're putting in a drywall on the side, on the right side.
You're not taking any of that out, though?
We are not taking the patio out. I spoke with the engineering office, they said just remove the gravel on the sides and the front, and let the patio be there, put a drywall, and you should be good.
Can you make that?
And your neighbor has a complaint? You have a neighbor in the backyard there?
We spoke with all the neighbors, the engineering, the engineership, we spoke with the neighbors on either side, on both sides, and the backs, they have no objection.
Okay. I did meet with them in their property.
Yeah.
And they have no issues.
Where's the drywall going?
So looking to the front of the house on the left back, on the, on the left side of the patio. Looking to the front of the house.
On Eric away, you mean? Looking at it from Eric away?
Yeah, looking at it from Erica.
Yeah.
It's on the right side.
The engineer.
You're looking toward Erica.
Anything to say about the fence? And why do you need a nine-foot fence? Did he say anything about the fence?
So the, it's a six-foot fence, but the three foot is a four, it's like green leaves.
Actually, that is your backyard neighbor put it, right?
Yeah, he put it, yeah.
He put it for the plant growth or something, some creepers.
Say that one more time?
Yeah.
So there, there's a six-foot fence.
You have a six-foot fence on your property?
Yeah. And the neighbor, he has put three foot on top, it's a four fence.
Of your fence?
It's his fence.
So we.
And he has put a three-foot four, green leaves, and it's a see-through, like, you can see through it.
But you have no standing to legalize it.
Yeah.
It's not on your property.
Right.
So. Why do you need a variance? If it's not yours?
It's not your fence.
It's not my fence, no.
Well, why are we considering it?
You can't.
Yeah.
I mean, so the town engineer, when he came, he just put it there, and I said, this is not my fence.
But it's on your application.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To legalize a nine-foot fence.
Maybe he saw everything and whatever is not.
Yeah, when the, when the officer came, he saw all of this and just put it on.
Your testimony is you do not have an eye for the fence on your property?
No.
Okay.
So once you wrote it up, did you know that that was somebody else's?
Of course you did. There's a note at the bottom. Applicant is proposing legalizing the nine-foot fence over the property line onto the rear of neighbor's property.
Actually, they said they can remove that one.
He said, if I have objection, he's willing to remove it. I have no objection.
Oh.
I mean, do we really legalize?
You can't legalize.
I'm laughing because we had an application where I wanted a really big fence, that had reason to have a big fence, and we didn't do that. So why would we do it here?
Find out whose property it is.
Is the neighbor's fence on your property?
It's not. It's his property.
So it's his property?
It's his property, his fence.
All right, then why was it in the application to begin with?
So the engineer, when he came, he saw all of this and put it in, I think, and it's part of that.
So is it an optical illusion where if you look at the fence, it looks like it's one fence, but it's actually two?
No. No, it's one, it's the four fence, it's the green four, it means on top of the six-foot fence. It's four.
There's one fence, not on your property, it's on your neighbor's property.
Yeah.
You do not have a nine-foot fence on your property.
No.
You have a six-foot fence on your property.
I don't have any fence, it's his fence.
So he's going to withdraw that, you're going to withdraw that. Now I get it.
Okay, that's out.
It's the six-foot fence. The top of this, like.
But it's not his, the metal one.
What's with the drive?
I would say that the question about the fence, I mean, it's shown on the survey, if anything, that means that the adjoining property is an encroaching, not to this property.
The fence is on his property?
Yeah, the back.
Who's his?
On the applicant's property?
Well, in the corner.
No, my neighbor's property.
The survey definitely shows it on your property. So it's like a foot over.
It looks like it's two, it's two fences. There's one that runs up the left, the left side, and a little bit to the back, which is on his property. And then it looks like the fence of the neighbor's.
Yes.
Is definitely on his property, but it doesn't look like it comes over that property line.
So when I bought this house, it was all there. I didn't do anything.
So I would say it's an encroachment of the neighbors.
Yeah.
To this property.
To the left, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Tell them you have a problem with it and take down the other three feet.
Fence's not straight.
Take down the, you don't even need it. I don't even.
Fence is not straight.
Yeah. Yeah, it is.
Doesn't look it.
No.
What was the decision on the patio? Patio is going to stay as is?
Yep.
Fence, we don't have to worry about. The accessory side yard, we're going to deal with. The accessory rear yard patio, we're going to leave it.
Yeah.
The driveway width, 24 feet, that doesn't sound like an excessive driveway. Did you expand the driveway?
On the, yes.
You expanded it?
Yes.
By how many feet? What was it originally? 20 feet?
Twenty, because 20 feet, I expanded by three feet. Two and a half, to be precise.
What's the driveway setback from the, I don't get that. Driveway width. Chaz, what is driveway setback? What does that mean?
Normally means from the property line, or, hold on a second.
Is it from the side yard setback, Chaz?
But it's more setback than.
The driveway has a five-foot setback from the side property line.
But he's nine, it says he's nine feet back, so why is that even an issue? Am I, am I misunderstanding that?
No, it's 0.9.
But then it says proposing one feet. Does that mean he wants to expand it? Oh, he's proposing one feet. I'm sorry.
Wait a second, I'm confused. Allowed is 24 feet, right? Am I at the right place?
No, we're on the next one.
Next one. Oh.
How are you proposing if it's already existing?
So are you reducing the width of the?
No, I'm not doing anything.
I'm just saying that the, I'm trying.
The 24-foot wide driveway, do you have a curb cut that goes that full 24 feet? Is it, can you drive every car right up like this? Or is it, is the curb?
There is a curb. So I have a 20-foot driveway.
Well, according to this, you have a 34-foot driveway.
No, like, on the road. Exactly on the road, is it widened up to 24 feet?
No.
No, only inside.
Inside.
But the driveway is 34 feet. That's what it says, doesn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
It says existing, 34 feet. Is your driveway bigger than everybody else's, your neighbor?
Absolutely not.
Now, I've got a wide driveway. Mine's 20 feet wide.
So what does this say?
It's 20.
That's existing 34.
Yeah. But these driveways aren't deep, so you can't hold more than one car, or two cars in the driveway. Maybe the gravel where you plant, where you put plants and all, he's also considering as maybe that's the reason. On the left, left side, Chairman.
That's another nine feet. There's, there's gravel alongside the driveway?
Yeah.
So you're going to remove that?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's take that one out.
Yeah.
And that would make it the 34 feet.
Actually, even if.
That would make it 24 feet.
Even if you leave also, that is, it's the plants and all the gravel.
This is the impervious coverage, so it's with the driveway.
Actually, it's not, we have us like this. This is like, oh, it's all.
So what we're saying is, it's 34 feet now because he included the gravel. You're taking the gravel out, and it's going to go back to the original 24 feet.
24 feet, okay.
But then to the right, you have pavement.
Right side, he is going to keep it. Right side of the driveway, there are two, two hundred feet.
Yeah, that I'm going to keep.
That's only left side.
On the left side, I'm going to remove all the.
Yeah, left side.
All right, so the fence is out, the side yard gravel.
Out. On the left side.
Rear yard's staying. The 24 feet is okay, now, we're not taking out the whole, the two sides.
We're taking out the nine feet.
Nine feet, so that brings that down to, to 25 feet. So that's, that's doable.
Yeah.
The plan and design standards, driveway setback, which I don't understand. I guess I do, one foot, okay.
That won't be one foot anymore. That won't be one foot anymore.
Yeah.
Yeah, the gravel's gone.
Okay, so that's, that's good. That's okay. And, and how many square feet are you taking out?
Twelve sixty-nine, one, two, six, nine, one thousand two hundred and sixty-nine.
One thousand two hundred and sixty-nine, and your lot coverage is. And your lot is six thousand four oh three, sixty-four oh three, sixty-four.
That's about twenty-five percent. Twenty percent.
Yeah. Putting twenty percent back in, so it takes it down to about fifty-seven?
Putting twenty percent back in?
Yeah.
Why? What, for, for what?
Well, the twelve sixty-nine is, is becoming pervious.
Yeah, twenty percent will be pervious.
Divided by sixty-four oh three equals nineteen point six six.
About twenty percent, yeah.
That's what it said.
So it takes it down to about fifty-eight.
So it'll be down to fifty-seven, okay. All right. Any other questions by the board?
Why, why are you unwilling to move off the fence in the back? Which would do two things. It would get you off the property line and it would reduce the pervious coverage.
Put the fence.
Out, pull your pavers back.
Where you put the pavers in to cover the grass area you had with the dogs? You said you had them swill back there?
Yeah.
You covered that in with pavers?
Yeah.
Pull them back.
Might have to remove those.
The driveways, uh.
Pull it back. There's too much impervious coverage. I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm, I'm not gonna put pervious with the.
So you did that work yourself? You put those pavers in yourself?
Yeah.
How long ago?
Yes.
How long ago?
Uh, three years ago.
Without any permits, right?
No, it's just, yeah, no, no permits.
You're probably gonna have to remove some of those. What hardship would that cause you if you had to remove those? Because this pervious coverage is still way too high.
Um, I mean, you want me to remove the patio, a part of patio on the back?
The part that goes right to your property line is, and, and that's impervious coverage problem. Can you take out some of that as well? What is the, what is the depth of that patio?
It's pretty deep.
Yeah, it's pretty deep.
It's the whole backyard.
Pretty deep, is that?
How big, how, how big are the pavers? Are they like?
Anybody have?
Each, you put, each paver is how big?
Size of a brick.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Are the pavers sealed?
Yes.
It's sealed?
With, with, uh, polymeric sand, impervious, the pervious polymeric sand. That's what we put between the pavers.
Yeah, they're not, they're not, uh, they're, they're impervious.
So that's part of the problem. If you put it on regular sand, the water would be going down. So that's a problem. So what do you want to remove?
That's what from the property line.
Chaz, can you, can you, uh, scale that? Do you have any idea how much that is? Give, give us your professional estimate of how many, how deep that patio is?
I was looking at the survey. It doesn't give us.
There's no dimensions on the survey.
No.
What are those four?
Four boxes.
Those four boxes, what is that?
So that is gravel, it's trees, and we're gonna remove that.
What's that?
So we have four trees in the, in the back.
Right.
And we have put gravel around the trees.
Okay.
And we have spoken with the engineering office and they said remove the gravel as well and that should cover it. So we are removing the green you see in the back.
I don't see any cover.
No, so I think if, I'm not gonna speak for my, my fellow panelists here, but it seems as though, would everybody be okay if he removed the, the pavers from the back of those boxes?
Yeah.
Back this to the fence.
If you look at the patio, on the left side, there's a white square.
Yeah.
And that's where that line starts. I would just draw that straight across.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
And then you're done.
Yes.
Yeah, based on where, where the fence is being one foot back, uh, look, eyeballing it, it looks like it's three or four feet.
Yeah, so I think Dave is right on. If you, if you square it up from that white box, go right, a couple of feet, it's probably three feet, you take it out, it, it makes the numbers even better.
In the back up to here.
Right.
So it looks like you would take out two or three rows of pavers along the fence.
Correct.
From back to this area.
So I'm removing, as per the engineering office, we are removing the pavers as well from here.
Yeah.
Green boxes.
Yeah.
Okay. Good.
No, behind, behind the green, uh, those things.
Yeah.
You agree?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
How many, so what is that, about two feet?
Two to three feet.
That moves away from the property line, which is good. Reduces the impervious coverage by another eight percent, I would say.
Okay.
Well, I think we need to have a consensus on exactly how many square feet it is. So if we approve the, we approve the variance and before John, before John, before, um, Peter, uh, puts, puts something into the resolution, we have to have a.
Chaz, do you think we're three feet off the back line?
At least, yeah, three feet.
Okay, so let's do three feet off of the line. So would that be fifty percent? You know, he's allowed forty, you allow him to, um, go to fifty percent, ten percent more?
I don't think that's unreasonable.
I think that makes sense to me. Yeah, and he's doing the dry well to make up for the other ten.
Yep.
So that makes sense, Chairman.
Anything else from the board? Chaz, you're okay?
Yes.
Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on testimony given this evening? I hear none and see none. There's nothing else you'd like to add, right?
Yep.
Okay. Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application? You hear none, see none?
I, I just wanna say that the dry well is proposed, but there's always a plan B if the soil is so bad. Turns out to be clay in the dry well, it's not going to work. They have to come up with something else, a piping system or something to that effect.
There is clay in that area.
Analyze the soil.
Clay, yeah.
That clay, is clay in that area.
There's clay in my backyard too, man.
Engineering, we will approach the engineering report.
Okay. Somebody make a recommendation based on what the applicant is willing to concede to?
Well, should we let Peter write it up in the appropriate manner? Yeah, so what he has agreed to, he's agreed to remove all the gravel on the left and the right-hand side of the property. Uh, he's going to amend the application to take out the request for the nine-foot fence, the fences on his property, he has no standing to, um, request that. He's also gonna remove, um, this approximately three foot of pavers in the back, uh, and he's gonna remove, um, in removing that, the impervious coverage is going to be, um, granted is fifty percent, uh, which allowed is forty percent. Plus the condition of working with the. Engineer. Engineer. Dry wells. Dry well or whatever's needed. That's correct. Okay. So.
So, so we're gonna, I want a resolution authorizing, um, the attorney to draft some move.
Second Jaskowitz.
Is there a second?
Jaskowitz.
Any discussion? Nora call the rules.
Director Lance.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Willand.
Yes.
Ira can.
Yes. So also the variance is granted. We'll memorialize this at our next meeting. Okay?
Thank you.
Okey-dokey. Application twenty-two sixty-two, Robert Greenfield, one forty-five Lakeshore Drive. See variance to construct the detached garage.
Sir, if you raise your right hand, you swore a firm testimony about the reports you got. For the record, you are Mr. Robert Greenfield, owner of, um, one forty-five Lakeshore Drive. I think you're sworn if you have a seat to speak in the microphone, Mr. Chairman, which has been sworn.
I assume that's Lakeshore Drive in Porcelline, not Lake Iowa?
Yes.
So your accessory yard, side yard, it's three foot, you're allowed five foot, six foot, I'm sorry, and you're proposing point five feet. Yards and courts open deck, thirty-one point nine seven existing, twenty-four allowed, thirty-six point one eight proposed. Building coverage twenty-four point four eight, existing twenty percent allowed, twenty-eight point six eight proposed, impervious coverage, forty-one point five three, forty allowed, and you're proposing forty-five seventy-three. Sir, if I may, um, I'm not exactly sure how it knows how it's about, it's probably my format skills. I currently have a standalone shed on that site that measures, um, approximately ten by ten by sixteen.
Mm-hmm.
Ten high, ten wide, sixteen long. The only adjustment I'm looking for is just to make it longer, keeping the height and the width the same. I took a measurement today between the side of the shed and the fence, it's three and a half feet, give or take an inch or two. I'm looking to keep that the same. Only thing I'll be changing is the length. So where it says point five side yard, you want.
I really don't know where that came.
You're, you're proposing three and a half feet?
Yes.
Okay.
Which is, what's there now?
All right.
Is the shed on the survey?
Yeah. It's, it shows this framed garage.
Oh, that's the shed.
And so you're just extending the frame of garage by about double? A little more.
Okay.
What's it used for? What's in there?
Lot of stuff. Yard care, uh, lawn stuff, mostly the kids crap. And hopefully eventually, one of my wife's junk too.
The bigger you make it, the more junk you're human.
You have a single-story building? Is it a ranch?
Um, the house?
Uh.
It's, it's, it's a ranch, but it's got like a full basement.
Um, so your, our four zone was six thousand square feet, and your lot is eight thousand square feet, but it's the position that, that is the problem.
It's not just that, because the engineer memo talks about a significant problem, uh, issue with the increase in stormwater runoff. I don't see that letter.
Okay.
Leaders, gutters on the.
I have a question.
Head right now?
Um, no, I don't think so. But I'm, I'm gonna take the whole thing down and put up a new, a new structure.
Which leaders and gutters?
Sure.
So, so you're amending this application from the, the existing three foot off the property line to a proposed three foot off the property line?
I'm not following.
Well, the, the, the application has for your side yard, an existing three foot with the current shed.
Right.
Allowed is six foot. And, and you were asking for it to be point five inches?
Yeah, I'm not really sure where that point five came from.
Okay, so, so you're amending that to the three foot, because you said you.
Yeah.
So the amendment to the, uh, side yard is existing three foot, allowed six foot, proposed three foot.
Yeah.
So the existing shed is how wide?
Um, little over ten feet, ten feet, three inches.
And the new shed is?
Be, it'll be exactly the same.
Well, this says twelve and a half feet.
Yeah, I, I really don't know why I say that.
Well, this is your survey.
That.
Oh, you know, okay. Yeah, and that's, again, because apparently my math skills suck.
Well, but we wanna base our decision on fact.
Right, I will have the, um, the shed company send over a revised, um, scale or picture, however, whatever you wanna call it, to basically match what's there now, just making it longer, that's all.
So what you submitted to us is not gonna be the size of the shed?
No.
Then how can we rule?
So how do we approve this?
We can't. We can't, because even the engineer's report is based on point five off the property line.
Well, he's just amended out applications, so.
Here, here is ten foot, and this.
No. This is ten feet.
He's putting it home.
Right.
Say it again?
There are two addresses.
If you, if you, he's amended the application, so it's gonna be three foot off that property line, so if that's the resolution, it doesn't matter if he has a fifty-foot wide shed.
Right.
He's gonna be in violation.
For that part of the application.
Yes, for that part.
What's, what are the dimensions of this new shed?
Ten by ten by forty.
Ten by ten by forty?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not getting five hundred square, square feet out of that, which is what we were told.
Four hundred.
That's a huge shed.
Square feet. Four hundred.
And it's written it's five hundred square feet.
Uh, maybe twelve point five maybe.
Which then could throw off the pervious, will throw off the pervious coverage.
They, they, they calculated it forty times twelve and a half, that's by five hundred.
Twelve and a half.
So you want to amend it to ten?
Yeah.
Is there a business run at the house, or is this just?
Uh, I have a business that run, I had a house, it's just on the side, but this is mostly just for storage of the yard stuff, kid stuff and the wife stuff.
What is this business?
Computers, sales, repairs and upgrades.
And you conduct none of it in the proposed garage?
No.
All right, back to the engineer report. It was, uh, Matt, did you see the engineer's report? Well. Okay. You know, we, we're, we're going along here and it's almost like we got a bunch of square pegs and round holes, because.
You mind?
The setback is different. The size of the, the size of the shed just went from five hundred to four hundred square feet, right? I think we need a whole new set of calculations and.
Hundred percent right.
And based on the engineer's report, that the applicant makes sure that he can control the water.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Control the rainwater.
Exactly.
There was a picture or a elevation of the, showing the garage, and also if the garage is proposed to have roof leaders and gutters, that you might be able to direct it to, uh, towards your house and/or the driveway to just control the water, so it doesn't impact the neighbor.
And the engineer being satisfied with it.
So you want like, like gutters coming down the side, going down to the driveway? And sounds like it's into the ground.
Well, did you see this letter?
I'm just.
Yeah, okay. You need to read that.
Actually, it doesn't seem. You need to read that after.
Not now.
It puts in the new number.
Right.
See what the engineer says.
Yeah, not now.
Can you come back with the exact measurements and numbers for the shed that you're gonna put in, replanned, so we have something we can read that's not being changed? Because everything's been changed here, we can't approve it.
Okay, and I would give those to the engineer and say, can I have the memo? I don't know if this is still applicable.
Yep.
You're gonna need to do that.
Well, how would I do that? We, this is all new to me.
Okay.
Yeah.
So us two.
Yeah.
We, we have to approve an application submitted. Right now, we've changed just about everything in the application submitted, because if that wasn't the right measurement, this is the wrong distance, gotta, yeah. We need an application with what your correct numbers are, which you would like us to approve, okay? And we'll see what.
When can, when, when can we get them back?
April nineteenth.
April nineteenth is the next open date, and that'll give you a couple of months to get all your ducks in a row. You know, you may have to consult, what would it be, um, Chaz, an engineer with regard to the runoff, if it's, if, if it looks like it's gonna be.
I would, I would wait until the township engineer looked at it.
Somebody, a landscaper or some.
They, they would make the call, because there's no grades on here, so we can't tell if the, uh, if it's obvious the water's gonna sink, go down the driveway or whatnot, so that's the biggest concern I have, is that we don't have.
We don't have enough information yet.
So you're looking for some kind of pitch?
No, we don't know. He, he says you'll have to mitigate any increased stormwater runoff. We don't know what that is yet. You don't know what it is yet either, so. One sec. Okay, so.
Right, now, you have to show us that the, the stormwater is not going to impact the neighbors.
Right. If what you're doing is gonna change the stormwater runoff from your property and impact the neighbor, you gotta show us how you're gonna correct that. We don't know that's gonna happen. The engineer suggested it may. You need to suffice him, so we don't have this on here. You come back and say, it doesn't look like I have a stormwater issue with this new addition, here's my real measurements, and then we can look at an application we can approve.
With the right numbers.
April nineteenth. Okay, motion to carry this case to April nineteenth?
So.
Second Snyder.
Any discussion? That will be with.
Yes.
Yes. This will be without further notice, and if we need to have a time extension, you're gonna have to, um, grant us a time extension, Mr. Greenfield.
Nora, do you need an extension?
Um.
Probably do, right?
I, I would, I would say.
So you, you grant extensions, so you'll grant us, you'll grant us an extension so we can carry this for you?
So we have time to hear the case? It's standard. Otherwise, we'd vote no tonight. That's the alternative, unfortunately. Okay, if there's any members of the public here, that this is the only notification you will get that this case is carried to April nineteenth. Um, one favor?
Uh.
Anyone oppose? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your honor. Application twenty-one seventy-three, Robbie and Rhenda Amin. Preliminary and final site plan CD variance to construct a multifamily residential building.
Oh, there was. Yeah, there's something.
Those two were.
Oh. Well, don't need it.
Joe, how many witnesses do you have?
I have three witnesses.
Back witness, you're a planner and engineer?
I have an engineer.
An architect.
Nora, could they talk to the neighbor?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Joseph O'Neill, Garofalo O'Neill, Rogirio, here on behalf of the applicants, the Amin's.
Yes.
This is for a multifamily home. When the application was first filed, it was for a three-unit project, uh, after comments with your professionals, that's been reduced down by one unit. With your permission, I'd like to begin by calling my engineer, Mr. Corzine.
Sure. Sir. You raise your right hand. You swore a firm testimony about the before the boards drew yourself you got?
I do.
And for the record, can you state, spell your name?
Peter Corzine, spelled K-O-R-Z.
And you're engineer?
Yes, license engineer and surveyor. My licenses are currently in state.
And you've been sworn either before this board or other boards in the state of New Jersey?
I have.
Mr. Chairman, you're sworn and qualified. Thank you.
Mr. Corzine, I wonder if you could begin with your exhibits. Walk us through the project.
Okay, this is the first plan I'll bring up. It's the boundary and topographic survey. It's sheet two of six, and it's last revised January seventh, two thousand twenty-two. So the subject site is located on the south side of Halsey Road, approximately sixty feet west of Ludlow Road. It's located in the B four zone district.
Can you speak a little louder? Just use the microphone closer to your face.
Yeah, it includes, uh, three thousand nine hundred square feet, and it's surrounded by properties also in the B four zone. Immediately to the east, you have the, um, martial arts studio. To the south is a dwelling in the B four zone, and to the west is a strip retail center. The, the site currently contains a one and a half story dwelling. In front of that is an asphalt parking area. In front of that is a paver walkway, and that leads out to the curb in Halsey Road. On the west side of the dwelling is a, an asphalt driveway, and that leads back to a detached garage in the back. Uh, to the east of the garage is an open area, which is, um, primarily ground cover with one large tree. Uh, to the east is the building for the, um, martial arts studio, and to the south is a detached, I'm sorry, an attached garage to the dwelling. It is located right on the property line, and, uh, just off the property line to the west is the building for the strip retail center. Uh, topography is flat. It generally sheet drains to the south and to the north from the center of the site. Uh, existing utilities are, um, overhead for electric, telephone and cable, and there's also, uh, a sanitary sewer lateral in the front and a water service line in the front. Uh, at the time of the survey, uh, field survey, gas was not marked out.
Is the purpose to reuse the connections?
Yes, I'll show that in the next plan. Actually, two plans. First plan I'll bring up is, does not show utilities, it's the dimensioning plan. This is sheet three of six. Uh, all of these will be last revised January seventh, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, so this plan shows the layout of what's proposed. It's a proposed three-story condominium building. You can see the bold line here. Um, also, there is an asphalt driveway in the front with two parking spaces. Uh, there's the front entrance to the building with a walkway that's proposed to connect with the existing walkway on Halsey Road. In the back of the building are two doors which lead down to a gravel area which also contains AC units. Uh, immediately to the west of the building is ground cover in between the proposed building and the strip retail center, and to the south and north of that are lawn areas. Uh, to the east of the building, in between that and the martial arts studio, is a gravel area which actually matches a gravel pathway that runs alongside the martial arts studio. Um, while this plan is up, I'd like to call your attention to the zoning data table, which is on sheet one of six at the top right. And this indicates the variances that are required for the project. The first one is lot area. As I mentioned, it's three thousand nine hundred square feet, and in the B four zone, the minimum lot area is eight thousand square feet. Uh, that, that is actually not a variance, so there's no change there. It's an existing, uh, non-conforming condition. Um, moving on down, I'm just gonna hit the variances. Uh, the front yard setback to the building is proposed at twenty-six point two feet.
You said it's an existing, but you're gonna raise the existing building, so wouldn't you have to conform to that?
Um, if that's the case, I actually don't have it listed on my chart, but whatever's been noticed and what, uh, recorded is increasing.
The, the lot area and lot width. The lot area and lot width would remain the same.
Yeah.
The building would take it down.
Understood.
Don't you need to build on a 3,000 square foot lot? 8,000 square foot zone?
We'll discuss that later, but we'll get it done.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just run down and I'll hit the variances that are actually outlined in the chart. So the first one is the proposed front yard setback. That's 26.2 feet, and in the zone, 35 feet is the minimum required. That's the first one. The second one is for the side yard setback on the east side. That's the Marshall Arts Studio side. That's proposed at 3.1 feet where five feet is required. However, the existing building is 3.9 feet. The third one is 8.1 feet for the rear yard setback. I'm sorry, the third one is for the combined side yard setback of 8.1 feet where 15 feet is required. Fourth one is 8.0 feet for the rear yard setback where 15 feet is required. The next one is for the building lot coverage. That's 1,999 square feet, which is 51.26 square, 51.26% of the lot area, and the maximum permitted is 1,170 square feet, or 30% of the lot area. And the final one is for building height. It's listed as three stories. The maximum building height as far as stories goes is two stories. However, the building height in, in feet actually complies with the zoning requirements. 34.4 feet proposed versus 35 feet maximum in the zone.
What's the lot size in square feet?
3,900 square feet. So while this plan is up, I'll also direct your attention directly below the zoning data table is the parking requirements table on the same sheet, sheet one. There are two exterior spaces for cars in front of the building, and you'll hear our architect describe the building later on, but there's two interior spaces as well. There's a total of four car spaces provided, and per RSIS for this type of building, which is two three-bedroom units, it requires four car spaces, so we are compliant with parking. Soil size also complies with the town requirement for size of parking area, which is nine feet by 18 feet. These two exterior spaces exceed that. The two variances that are listed are actually existing non-conforming conditions. One of them has to do with the length of the curb cut in front of the property. It's currently, it occupies the entire frontage of the property. It's 40 feet long, and the maximum permitted is 24 feet. However, I just wanted to point out that we're actually changing the interior asphalt. So once you get inside the property, the total width of that driveway area is actually less than what's required. It's 23.5 feet versus the 24. The final one is for the minimum setback of the curb cut from the property line. Since it occupies the entire frontage, it's zero feet from the side property line, and five feet is required. So that covers the variances on sheet one. And the final plan I'll bring up is the grading drainage and utility plan. This is sheet four of six. To answer your question, we are going to be connecting the proposed sanitary into the existing sanitary sewer lateral and utilize it if possible at a cleanout near Halsey Road, as shown on the plan. There's also underground utilities that are proposed on the west side of the building, so the overhead electric telephone and cable will be replaced with underground. There is a fire service line and a domestic water service line in that area as well, and a gas line. This plan also shows some photography as far as spot elevations go. It respects the existing topography, so there is sheet drainage to the north and to the south from approximately the center of the lot. And there was also sheet drainage in the back from east to west as well.
The roof drainage goes where?
One thing that's not shown on this plan, and these plans were being drafted at the time of the 2021 ordinance for stormwater, so we are proposing, it's not shown here, would be a drywall system underneath the asphalt parking area in the front, which will take all of the roof runoff, subject to soil testing of course. I think I mentioned that there is an existing tree in the back on the survey that's shown here. It's 29 inches. That'll have to be removed. And that's, that pretty much covers my presentation. I'm open for questions at this point.
Will the other tree also have to be removed?
You know, that's a, that's, that's a tough one. It's right on the property line. It may be impacted. We do have utilities coming into that side of the building. We'll have to see what happens there.
Are you replacing any vegetation?
There's really no opportunity other than lawn. We have a small strip of lawn here. Nothing would grow in between the buildings on the west side. Nothing would grow in the back in between the buildings, and same thing on the east side as well.
Any questions by the board? All this underground utility stuff and that, that, what, what, so you currently have a above-ground utility poles?
Yes.
And you're going to take all them out and put it underground?
Yes.
Is that going to be your job or is that the utility company's job?
Division of Responsibility? I think it varies from utility company to utility company. I know the water we would be doing ourselves, sanitary we'd be doing ourselves. I, I, you know, I want to say that they are responsible, the contractor, for every conduit and, and possibly JCPN will pulls the wire. I don't really know.
Do those utility poles serve any other neighbors or any other business in the area?
It's actually, it's out on the, in the right of way, so I'm sure there's a wire that connects somewhere else from there. Yes.
Are you the expert to speak to the water allocation or is that somebody else?
No, that's, that's me. I know it's 1,500 gallons per day. We're nowhere near that. Even if you considered this two, as I mentioned, it's two three-bedroom units, so if you considered it two single-family homes, you're still not going to be anywhere near that. It's going to be 200 gallons per day.
So it'll be less used than what it's presently?
Oh, yeah, much less.
Are these for sale or for rent?
These are for sale. For sale, condominiums.
Any other questions by the board? Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on testimony given to you? Please come forward and identify yourself.
Mary Purzicki. Mary, Mary Purzicki at 273 Marcela Road in Lake Persiboney. My question is, is, is this building going to be on the?
I need you to speak up. I need you to speak up.
You have to speak closer to the mic. You can take it out.
Is this building going to be on the original footprint of the original, with the structure that is there now, or is it going to be bigger than the, the structure now? The?
Footprint.
The footprint?
The footprint will be larger.
The footprint would be larger?
Yes.
So you're going to knock that house down totally that is there now?
Yes.
And you're going to have enough front setback with the, with the fact that there's a township right of way that has a sidewalk on it? Because what is going to be the dimension of the parking spaces lengthwise that would run into the street? Would it interfere with the sidewalk or not?
Not at all. To answer your first question, we do need a variance for the front yard setback. It's 26 feet and 0.2, I believe, back from the property line, and it's required to be 35 feet. However, the strip retail center is the same distance back, so we're kind of matching that. And as far as the parking spaces go, we actually exceed what's required. Normally, it's 18 feet long is the minimum length that's required, and we're proposing 26.6 feet long. So it's much longer than what's required, much longer than a car.
Much, by what, by how many feet?
Even if it's a very large car, that's an extra six feet.
An extra six feet? So it would be six feet from where the sidewalk is to where the car would be parked?
Actually, not from the property line, which is inside from the sidewalk. So it's even further from the sidewalk. It's even further.
Even further from the sidewalk? So if I park my car, there would be enough room and visibility for blind spots?
Oh, absolutely. On this road, in both directions, you're probably looking at in the neighborhood of 500-foot visibility as you back out. I'm talking about vehicles traveling down the road.
Yeah, because that's a very busy area. There's a, oh, I'm not allowed to say that, right? This is a statement.
What condition is the sidewalk?
I don't, I don't recall. It was a while before I was out there listening.
Is there any plan to replace?
No, we were just proposing to leave it the way it is.
I would, I would just replace it.
Chaz, a little lad, I just came here.
Yes, I would replace the sidewalk as part of the project, and you, you can evaluate the sidewalk curve, see if it's reasonable.
We'd agree to that. That's fine. We'll replace the sidewalk.
The sidewalk was put in by the township. It's on the township right of way, isn't that correct?
That's, that's times, it's installed by developer. It's replaced when they installed a driveway apron, even though that's in the right of way.
Even though that it's in the right of way?
Right. If it's right in front of the property.
Because presently speaking, there's not that much space between, I believe I'm asking a question, okay? There's not that much space between the existing building now and the karate place. So the distance, what would the distance be between the karate and the building itself? What, what are you proposing on the side, on the east side for side, for a side yard?
Yeah, on the east side, the existing house was 3.9 feet from the property line, not from the karate building. It's greater than that to the karate building, but it was 3.9 feet, and this building proposed is, is 3.1 feet. So it's a little bit closer, but within reason.
Within reason. And is this, is this going to have two car garages? Is that the picture on the floor?
Yeah, we have a project architect that's going to fully describe the whole building, and you'll, you'll see all of that, but there are two car spaces inside, yes.
Because, and, and it is a three-bedroom, two units are going to be built there. Is that correct?
Our next witness will get into those details.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he's got it.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other member of the public have any questions of this witness?
None.
Hear none, see none. Next witness?
Thank you, Mr. Mistery.
Excuse me.
So raise your right hand. You swore a firm testimony about before the board's true self you got?
Yes, I did.
For the record, can you state and spell your name?
Yogesh Mistery, Y-O-G-E-S-H-M-I-S-T-R-Y.
And you are a licensed architect?
Yes, I am.
And all your licenses are in full force and effect?
Yes, they are.
You've been qualified before this board and other boards in the state of New Jersey?
I have.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chairman, the witness has been qualified and also sworn.
Yep. Okay.
Mr. Mistery, you have some handouts for us?
Yeah, I'd like to start with just a handout. It's a color.
Mark that as A1 for this evening?
So exhibit A1 that's being handed out is two color photographs taken off of, this is from, I think, the Google website, but showing the subject property with sort of a street view and then an aerial view on top. On both images, there's a designation for 162 Halsey, which is the subject property, sort of in the middle of the photograph of each. Just to give everyone context, these photographs kind of show what's happening. The subject property, 162 Halsey, there's an existing, I guess we'd call it a dwelling, but I think at one point it was a shop, ice cream shop or something like that, and the owner lived on the second floor or the attic level, I guess. But you can see it's kind of run down. It's, you know, kind of deteriorated. In addition, this, this is kind of a weird zone. It's the B4, but sort of all around it is the residential zone, so it's kind of unique like that. But you could see there's kind of a sea of parking all along, sort of between Ludlow and Quaker Road on Halsey, because there's a strip mall to the right and there's, sorry, and there's the karate studio to the left. So this is kind of a continuous strip of asphalt, which I think our project will help at least break that up a little bit. So our project is essentially in line with where the, the front of the building is currently. We're actually pushing it back slightly, and we're going to be slightly behind where the strip mall to the right is. So that's kind of just laying the context there.
Let's mark that as A2 for tonight.
Sure.
We don't have that here, right, in color?
No, that's A2. So just going to mark this A2. This is a color rendering of the proposed property, proposed project, and this is a rendering that was produced by our office. It's showing the proposed project right in the middle, and then to the right, you could kind of see part of the dance studio, and then to the left, you kind of see part of that karate studio. You know, our building's right in the middle. So what we're proposing is a, a brand-new building. It's a two-unit condo building. Each unit will be three bedrooms. Just to kind of run through the, the plan, there's two garages on the ground floor and entry to the right, and when you go up the stairs, the, the right kind of portion of the building is a stairwell. Second floor would house the first unit. The third floor would house the, the second unit. Just to run through square footages of the building. The first floor is 1,945 square feet, and the upper levels are 1,823 square feet each. Our total of 5,591 square feet. In addition, there's 287 square feet of sort of balconies that are facing the front. The, just going to refer to my black and white floor plans that were submitted as part of this application. This sheet is A2.01, and these drawings are dated January 7th, 2022. Just to kind of walk you through the floor plan, the bottom right floor plan is the ground floor. There's two separate one-car garages, one for each tenant, and then the stair, common stair to the right of that. And behind it are just kind of two storage slash utility spaces, each being used for each tenant. So when you come up the stairs, you come to the first unit, the, the second and third floor are essentially identical. Each unit is, is sort of a mirror of each other or, or copy of each other. It's a three-bedroom unit, living, dining, kitchen in the front, two bedrooms in the middle, and then the master bedroom in the back. You have two and a half baths for each, each unit, and again, it's kind of a copy on the, on the third floor. These are condos. What my client wanted to do was really create something that was sort of on the higher-end side. They want something nicer. They want quality finishes. They want, you know, certain level appliances. I do want to just hand out another exhibit just to kind of show some interior images or sort of representation of what they're thinking of inside.
A3.
I'll mark this A3.
Is there a subject DCA in the condo? Do you have to get approval?
Not for.
Not for, to your rights, sir. Is there an association?
There'll be a structure set up to accommodate that.
Um, yeah, so, these are photographs, actually, they're taken from a, sort of representative project that I've done on another site, but, you know, they, they want a certain level of quality, they want nine-foot ceilings here, they want individual HVAC units for each, each, uh, space, stainless steel appliances, granite countertops, generous windows and a balcony, so they, they do intend to sort of market this more of an upscale market, um, and, you know, let, hopefully they get buyers that'll, um, kind of meet this, uh, goal that they have. Um, we do understand there's some variances here, and it's just a really tough site because of the size of the, the site. Um, the, the thirty-nine-hundred-square-foot lot size is really the, the, kind of the most limiting factor, I think eight thousand square feet is standard in this zone, but, um, you know, we're stuck with thirty-nine-hundred square feet. Um, the front yard setback is mentioned, uh, thirty-five feet is required, we're at twenty-six point two. Again, I think we're improving what's, what's here right now, it's twenty-three feet, uh, and we're at twenty-six point two now, um, and it's still providing enough area for the cars to park in the front and still have enough space for the sidewalk. Uh, I, I think to the, um, the other comment that was mentioned before, um, there is a sort of a paver sidewalk, and I, I mean, I believe, I think it's still in good condition, but that's going to remain, our property starts after that, so, you know, um, we're, we're looking to maintain that sidewalk, we're not looking to reduce it or park on it.
On this photo, just to help me clarify, so, the current picture on, uh, this guy, it looks like the current structure is quite a bit further away from the shop on the right-hand side than your proposed structure, is that right? So that...
Yeah, currently, to, the, the guy on the right is almost right on the property line, but the existing structure does start a little further to the left.
So there'll be very little access through the sides of the buildings there? Can you walk, still walk through there?
Yeah, there'll be five feet between here.
Five feet?
Yeah.
All right, and then the proposed parking, you have two parking places inside and two parking places outside.
Correct. One, one tenant would have one spot in the driveway and one in the garage, and same, same for the other two.
Do you need a sprinkler system?
Each one is a three-bedroom unit, correct.
Do you need a sprinkler?
Um, I don't believe so, for two-family on this.
What about for three-story?
No, no, I don't believe so. It would be...
He's saying yes.
We'll comply with all...
Yeah, well, if it, if it is required, we'll have to put it in, that's a requirement of the building department.
The, this could just be, uh, the way the picture reads, but I'm looking at that car pull into the garage, there's enough room to open the doors and get out.
Yes, yes. I mean, I think on the, on the floor plan, I do show a depiction of a vehicle.
I saw something on the other side, yeah.
Yeah, that is shown accurately to scale, but, yeah, there would be space to, um, you know...
It doesn't even look like the doors would open all the way.
It'll be a little bit tight, but it just, you know, I mean, these lots are extremely tight, just, uh...
And can you put, uh, that, I forget what that was, A1 up again?
H2.
Sorry, H2. Going down the right side of the, of the proposed building, is that a big window there?
I see it, there's a door.
On the first, second floor, I guess?
This one?
Yeah.
There is a window from...
And is that just looking into the building next to it?
It would be close, but depending on the height, maybe part of the window's above, part of the window's below it, I'm not sure that it's that tight here.
Looks like you opened a window, and you, you're looking into the brick facade of that building.
Yeah, unfortunately, he's, you know, very close to the, uh, property line. Um, I think that's the, uh, something on that.
Would you have a, a photo or a rendering of the proposed rear? So I, I see in the plan here, there's, there's, there's doors in the rear, proposed, sliding doors that go out to the back of the building, out the back of the building?
Yeah, there are, there's like a storage, utility, office room on the, on the ground floor, there is just a slider, like a patio door. Um, there's not a lot of space there, there's about eight feet, we will have sort of condenser or AC units in the back, um, and then, you know, really what, what's left over for the, for the yard space in the back, yeah. Um, there is an elevation shown.
So there's a hook, maybe cable out there or something, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I guess, yeah. Um, rear elevation shown on A4.01 is the, the view from the backside.
Okay, my question, the, from the back view there, the people living on the second, the third floor there, how do they get out from upstairs?
The people who live on the...
Yeah.
The upper floor?
Yeah.
The, there's a...
They only have the one stair?
Yeah, there, there's a common stair that goes from first floor.
That's the only way out of the second-story place.
Correct.
So, so what, what are the, it's a beautiful building.
Yeah, it looks nice.
But one of the questions the chairman often asks when someone's putting in a new structure or tear, a teardown, is how does it fit in with the, with the, with the neighbors? Now, it's a little different because you have no neighbor there, but that just kind of doesn't seem like it goes.
Well, this...
It's really nice looking.
As I, as I mentioned, as I mentioned, this is a really unique area, and if you look back at that first exhibit showing the, you know, the area, you don't, if you zoomed out at that, you'd see a lot more residential, single-family homes. This is a very unique area that there's a, a sort of spotty, you know, small businesses here and there, and maybe fifty years ago it worked, but today, you know, it just doesn't...
But are they ranches, or are they...
Um, there's, there's, there's really a mix, there's a mix of colonials, there's a mix of, um, you know, ranch, you know, it, it's Lake Porsypanee, you know, I think...
Yeah, but, but, um, to Mr. Jostswitz's point, this does not correlate with it, the scale, the aesthetics, or just the general vibe of the, of the entire neighborhood.
It's too nice for that.
It's too, it's huge, it's, it's intense.
Um, it's really, uh, in terms of the height, yeah, we are three stories, which exceeds the two-story limit, but in terms of height, we're below the thirty-five-foot limit in, in actual feet and inches.
Understood.
Um, and I know there's other homes in the area that, you know, they're not necessarily full three stories, but they essentially have a garage below and then two stories above, very similar to ours. In fact, there's two lots right across the street, uh, or two, um, two properties, one sort of diagonally cross on, uh, corner of Ludlow and Halsey, but on the other corner, it's essentially, as you come around the back, it's got exactly that, has garage at the lower level and then two, two stories above that. Um, same thing, if you go one block over on Centerton and Ludlow, you know, and you come around the back, there's a, a parking, um, driveway and a garage at the sort of lower level, and then you got first floor, second floor above that, so, I, I, you know, in terms of the height, like I said, in feet and inches, we're within, uh, what's allowed, it's just, the definition is three stories here.
Yes, the board will take notice also, and our planner's going to talk about this. The karate studio was subject to an application before this board for improvements for a second floor, that's about thirty-three feet, uh, of a similar design to this, uh, application.
Yeah, well, I mean, just, just, and I think, you know, this would be an improvement in our eyes, it's an improvement to the site, improvement to the area, what's there, it's been there for a long time, it's run down, and really just not functional in today's market, you know, to put a, you know, a thousand-square-foot retail business or, or a single-family home, it just, I don't know, doesn't work, this is a market that, um, you know, our client sees as an opportunity to get maybe a young family that, you know, that has a young kid, and, you know, it's, they're using the two bedrooms, and maybe the third bedroom is like an office.
Family with a small kid in that area? Where's he going to play?
Well...
Let's, let's cut to crap.
Yeah, to, to the chairman's point, the only life of grass and trees and, and nature is being taken away, uh, by the previous testimony. Like, the, the whole quadrant, that whole Halsey Road quadrant is, is going to be cement or asphalt with this.
Well, I, I think, again, from the front side, we are trying to soften that a little bit, right now, it's completely asphalt.
You got a strip.
Yeah, I agree, but it's...
That's it, just a strip.
There's nothing soft about it.
Kudos to your promotional efforts, but it's a strip.
I have a question, so again, looking at, uh, A1, is that a garage on the property?
A1, where? Uh, oh, in the back?
Yeah.
Yeah, there is a small garage in the back.
That's part of this property.
Correct.
What's in the garage now? Doesn't matter.
Uh, yeah, I'm not sure what's there now, it's just an old garage.
Yeah, and I tell you, you know, it, it's beautiful, but then, we're talking about three bedrooms, we got two, two spaces for each unit, but the construct of it, and again, I go with the vibe, I could see a lot, like, single people rooming together as opposed to your picture of ma, pa, and baby, um, and then I'm wondering, okay, the, in practice, I could see each unit needing three spaces, not two. Where, where's that overflow going?
Well, I, I think we're not asking for a parking variance, as far as I understand.
Right, it's a busy area, we all know that, we all, we know this area pretty well.
It's a, it's a very nicely-designed building.
Mm-hmm. Certainly is.
And someone just mentioned to me that those two, uh, decks or porches or whatever should be overlooking the water, not overlooking Halsey Road.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's out of its, uh, environment, I mean, it's just, it's...
Almost anything else.
That's all I had for my testimony.
Any other questions by the board?
No, right now. Any members of the pub, I'm sorry, let me confirm this one, the garages, that floor?
The ground level is the garage level?
Yeah, the ground level, there's no living space, right?
No.
Okay.
So the garage is under the front part, what's in the back part of the building, uh, on the, on the ground floor then?
It's a garage, utilities.
It's all the way, utilities, neighbors.
In the house, you're saying, or...
Yeah, on the ground floor of that structure, yeah, parking on the front part, what's in the back part?
There's like a storage utility room in the back, yeah.
That's what I think, and that's why those doors are in the back there.
Correct.
Got it, okay. I'm sure you would have put this in, but like, how, how does the, how do you get out in bed of a fire?
It would be a rear staircase.
There isn't.
There's no rear staircase.
There might be, there isn't, but...
Oh.
Probably, I, I don't know, wouldn't you need one of those emergency?
I would think you need something.
Right?
I mean, normally the bedroom windows are big enough for you to get out of, you better have a rope.
How do you get to the ground?
You better have one of those rope ladders.
Fire escape.
Yeah, but that's...
No, it, it would meet all fire codes and building codes.
Yeah, I mean, as long as they meet the fire codes, that's not our problem.
Seems odd. Any other?
Yeah, I, I mean, right, to Mr. Kaplan's point, it's pretty odd, I, I, right, you'll meet all fire codes, but I find it incredible that you, it's not in the design now, right? Like a fire escape in the back.
No, you, you wouldn't need a fire escape, this, it would meet building codes as is right now.
I'd be nervous living there if that was the in and, the only in and out.
Well, that's not our issue.
Yep.
If it is needed, applicant willing to do the staircase behind, if it is required by fire department.
It's a fair, it's a fair... By who?
Fire department.
It's, it meets the code.
Yeah, I mean, they said there's a code.
You know, you know what's, you know what's very interesting about this application? Now, now, now that I'm thinking about it, we've had houses in like Lake Par, primarily in Lake Par, where the houses, and, and I even remember who the, who the applicant wanted was, it was, um...
Doesn't matter.
Okay, it doesn't matter. The fire department came in and said, these houses are too, this house is too close together, we can't get a ladder in between those houses to get up to the second floor. And you're telling me what's, what, from the edge of the pro, the building to the edge of the building is how many feet?
Five.
Where's the fire, where's the fire marshal in this, is he out to lunch this week or what?
Uh...
I, I, I will not say another word about this application with regard to it until I hear what the fire marshal has to say about the sideline. If he says it's okay, fine, but I, I question.
We never respond.
I question.
Fire district didn't respond.
Yep.
Well, we're going to go, we're going to ask him to respond, because I'm concerned about that, because I don't think that, that they can efficiently put out a fire on the second floor.
And as only members...
And I don't know, I'm not a fireman, but...
Whether we live there or not.
Well, there's five feet between the buildings.
I understand that.
The building is engaged.
The building is what?
The building is engaged, there is a fire in the building.
Yeah.
The fireman walks up to the side of the building...
Yeah.
With five feet between that building...
Right.
And the other building, puts a ladder up.
I don't know if he, I don't know if he can.
Ten feet.
I don't know, depending on how high he has to load that ladder. I want the fire marshal in that district to tell me that this is okay. I don't want a no answer, I want to know that it's okay, very simple.
How are we going to compel this answer?
I will, we'll compel it.
We'll ask.
We'll compel it, and we'll go, we'll keep going until we find out the answer, because there's been fire people here before on other applications, maybe some of the zones in this town, the, the fire marshal is more concerned than in others, but if we have to, we, we will get someone to give us an opinion, we'll give it, township official to give us an opinion.
I just want to make sure I understand, this application is going to be delayed, the decision's going to be delayed until the fire department, such time that the fire department renders an opinion?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
But the safety concern, sorry.
Okay, safety concern.
Yeah, I agree.
Am I, am I, am I going to do something?
Well, we're not agreeing to such.
We have no report. And no, no report is not a report.
That's not the applicant's fault.
I understand that.
The fire department often does not file reports. The explanation for that, I do not...
But we have a public duty to...
I look at it this way, if we wanted to hear from the engineer and the engineer didn't file a report, we'd ask for an engineer's report, we've sent, I don't know how many applicants back saying, go to the engineer's office and have them come out to your property and take a look and give us a report.
Donald Pierce, Donald Pierce, it was a two-story house in Lake Porsypanee, and Donald Pierce has probably built forty homes in this town, and they, they had to make some modifications so that there was enough room, and you, and it was more than five feet, these, this was two single-family houses, there, there was no big, um, question about, you know, it was that, that he was requiring, I, I don't remember the exact numbers, we had to, we had to come to an agreement. I don't know, if we don't have a report, I think we need a report, simple as that.
Joe, I think, I think the board's saying it's a, it's a safety concern.
Subject to fire department.
I, I don't think the delay would be that.
I don't know how we, I don't know how we can say that.
Well, we could vote on it, subject to the fire inspector approving it.
Right, we'll take that under.
And, and we always put in that, these resolutions, subject to all the township officials, you know, approvals and whatnot.
Post-approval. That doesn't hold up sign and plan, it's waiting for somebody to report back on something. Subject to the construction office, subject to the fire inspector.
But Joe, I'm sure, I'm sure your client would want to be as safe as possible as well.
We're, we're not saying we're being unsafe.
I'm just...
Fire district chief. You want the fire district chief to render a report, the fire inspector files a report for construction office, that's something separate, it's still subject to that.
Then why have I, why have I had fire people here objecting to, to applications?
Yes.
The biggest one of all was that, um, what direction am I looking in? The apartment complex on Forty, on, on Route 80?
I'm not, look, I want to be clear, my only concern is compelling the fire district to file a report, not what the fire district's going to say, not that they're going to have something over our head, it's compelling them to do that, you don't really have the power to do that, you can ask.
We can ask.
But you can't compel, so if they just, for whatever reason...
Okay, we will ask.
We can ask.
I can't believe they will...
I'm sure they'll respond.
Though, though, they will deny without, uh, you know, but...
Since safety concerns...
They will not unreasonably deny us a, a letter, I think it's for their concern also, what if they have to fight a fire there? What if they have to fight a fire there?
Well, not like that, once the board asks them, if they said no...
That's District 3, right? That's District 3, Lake Porcypani. Those are good people over there. I know District 3 very well, I've been their accountant for 20 years.
They're very good people, they're very dedicated people, they know what they're doing. I'm not saying that, I'm just saying...
All right, let's go on, let's go on.
I mean...
The report. If there's a way to get a report...
Previous applications, especially of this scale, we could literally count on the fact that we would see a fire report. So either, like, somebody's gotten a little lackadaisical over this, or, but we should see it, and we're going to request it, because it's historically been included in these packets.
Well, in their defense, everybody's busy, so I don't know what the...
So are we.
But we also want to do the right thing, and if the board is concerned about the safety, I think it's incumbent us to at least try to get an answer. It's only fair. I don't have any problem with that. Problem I have is, we're not going to render a decision until such time as they provide a report. We're not doing a stall tactic. We want an answer. I know that's not your intention, but it could turn into that.
Mr. O'Neill, if we, let's assume that we take under advisement, we say, okay, depending on a report, we'll approve it with that condition, and now the building, go ahead and start building the building, and now they have to do something there, huh?
You think they can get a building permit?
You can't get a building permit.
They can get a building. You can't get the building permit if you don't comply with fire comments in the construction office.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
All right.
That's always the safeguard.
I understand, okay.
Okay. Well, what's the worst that happens? He says no. No, the worst that happens is he says nothing, and we don't get a decision. That's the worst of that.
No, if a building...
Frankly, I've been there for that.
Here?
Yes, in this town, a long time ago.
Okay, we're not getting anywhere here. Mary, you have questions of this witness? Please come forward.
Yes, I do.
The microphone, Mary.
Just for the record, Mary Przyzki.
You were going to have two patios, open patios...
Need you to speak up.
You're going to have two patios facing Halsey Road? Am I correct?
Balconies. Balconies.
Balconies, okay.
Correct.
Two balconies facing Halsey Road for people to sit on?
Yes.
And I know, I live in a bi-level, and I do have a garage underneath my, where I live, my living space, right? And in this particular instance, I think the garages are taking up most of all the downstairs ground floor space, is that correct?
It takes a good chunk of the first floor, correct.
So really, I'm looking at three levels of house, is that correct?
Yes.
Three levels, and when I look at where the cars are, I do not even see any inkling of a front lawn, so...
Lawn?
Huh?
There's no lawn.
She says she doesn't see an inkling.
There's no lawn there.
There is absolutely no lawn there, that's what I'm saying, and...
There, there's nothing there now.
There's no lawn there now either.
Now, are you talking about now?
No, now and in that particular picture.
There's just a...
What's the question?
So, the impervious surface of that whole area of what you plan to build, plus the driveway, plus it looks like a walkway?
Yeah, there's a walkway to the front door.
It's a walkway. How much of impervious surface are you putting on that lot, percentage-wise?
That was a question for the engineer, so we're going to have to recall him for that later. Do you have any more questions? Can you answer that, Mr. Porzin?
Yes, I can.
All right, go ahead.
We're proposing, as far as lot coverage, 2,767 square feet. The current lot has 2,233 square feet, so the net change is 534 square feet of increase, which is...
Can you tell me that percentage, please? I don't understand your, how you're describing it.
You want the total percentage that has impervious coverage, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
The total percentage of what we're proposing is 50, I'm sorry, 70.95%, which is less than what's allowed in the zone in a decent percentage. Is that what you're looking for?
Yep, okay, I appreciate that, thank you. And I think, I, you, do you believe that the fire company should be called into this because there were occasions where fire department in District 3 were called in, correct on a house, and correct on a piece of property on Porcypani Road?
And just want to be clear, Ms. Przyzki, the fire department had an opportunity to comment on that. What we're talking about is renewing a request to them for, to see if they had any comments. It's, we're not resisting comments of the fire department.
So you do feel that there could be a safety issue?
No, we do not feel there's a safety issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you want to talk?
If you want to ask a question of this witness, right?
Ma'am, just for the record, could you state your name and address?
She said she did.
Okay, my name is Barbara Seaman, and my address is 360 Halsey Road, S-E-A-M-A-N. You said Halsey Road is a unique area, am I right?
This submitted area is...
Unique.
Unique in terms of the uses, that there's some businesses and there's residential.
Right, there's residential, there's business. It has always been that way since I'm here, since 1959.
Excuse me, excuse me, we don't need a history of property, we need a question, okay?
So my question is, this building is so high, it is better than what Cone Cottage looks like, can you not maybe put the garage, which would bring it down to the height of the other buildings?
I don't think in real feet, we're higher than much of it, because we're, 35 feet is allowed in this one.
Yes.
We're less than 35 feet.
Yes, but if you look, it just does not fit in there. And somebody who wants to sit on their porch and look at Sullivan's Corner, that's up to them. But my other question to you is, you have two parking spots per each floor.
Correct.
And three bedrooms each floor.
Yes.
So the husband and wife are going to need two parking spots, and when the other kids that they move in, and let's say they're 17, where are they going to park? Because you can't park...
I don't know who's going to live here, but we're meeting the requirements for number of parking spaces for this type of use.
Parking is not a variance.
That is for housing use.
Right. Excuse me, excuse me, parking is not a variance request.
Okay.
So we can't deal with that.
This is the first time I'm asking questions. So, okay, that's all I really want to ask you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's take a five-minute break. Okay, next witness?
Well, Mr. Chairman, after consultation with my client, and given the discussion of the board, what we would like to do at this time is, we would like to request an adjournment to allow for the fire department to come back with any potential comments. We understand that the last application got carried till April, hopefully that'll be